All right, now we'll move on to public hearing.
Item 6A, hold a public hearing and adopt a CQ conformity determination for the proposed multifamily residential development at 500 Sylvan Avenue. Waive first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 12.96 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to establish a planned development district. Update the zoning map and adopt a development plan for the multifamily residential development located at 500 Sylvan Avenue. Adopt a resolution approving a planned development permit, architectural review permit, and conditional use permit for the multifamily residential development located at 500 Sylvan Avenue.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I need to recuse myself because I own property within the area.
Irene will be stepping out, but, and then we will continue, and Director Smith, will you be taking lead? Please go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Mayors of the City Council. My name is Darcy Smith. I'm the Community Economic Development Director for the city. Tonight, I'll just provide a brief PowerPoint report on the project which locates 500 Sylvan Avenue. This project was continued from the May 18th City Council meeting. Additionally, the project architect, Mr. Kuhn, and the property owner, Mr. Gandhi, are both in attendance tonight. First, I'll start with the objective for tonight's item. I'll just provide a brief project description, a summary of the May 14th City Council meeting, specifically information on the parking permit program analysis, and the presentation will conclude with a restatement of the council's actions before them. The objective of tonight's presentation is to brief you on some research that staff has completed on the parking permit program comments that were made by the City Council members at the May 14th meeting. Then we will hold the public hearing, take the following recommended, or you will have the option of taking the recommended actions related to the project, which include a CQ conformance determination, waiving the first reading, and introducing an ordinance that would amend the municipal code and adopting a resolution approving the development project. The site is located at the northwest corner of Sylvan Avenue and Green Avenue. It currently has a vacant commercial building, and the applicant's proposing to demolish that and construct a three-story multifamily building that contains nine residential units. At the public hearing that was held on May 14th, the City Council members opened the public hearing, closed the public hearing, and then discussed amongst themselves and asked questions. The council members had an interest in incorporating a condition of approval that would prohibit any future residents from, of this project, from participating in any future parking permit program. And that public hearing was continued to tonight, May 28th, to allow staff further review regarding that potential condition. So, a residential parking permit program limits the number of vehicles that each residence can park on the streets in a defined zone. It also limits hours by which those vehicles can park on the street, and typically, there's a guest parking component. All of those restrictions in the area of the parking permit program are not determined at this point, but Public Works is actively working on establishing a parking program pilot project, which was last covered at the Parking Town Hall in January, and they are working on that and anticipate going live with that later this year, based on current information. So typically, with a parking permit program, future residents are not excluded, and specifically, there's no distinguishment between unit or ownership type. So what we have here are apartment units, and typically, in the neighborhood, there's both ownership units and some potential rentals. But the direction from the state attorney general is to not distinguish or exclude certain types of ownership units, ownership types, which would typically be a delineation made between apartments or rentals, and then ownership units. Additionally, staff analyzed the location of this site relative to the proximate neighborhoods, which is shown here. And because of this location, which is really surrounded by residential uses to the north, it would be very difficult to just exclude this tiny little corner property. Again, we don't know the boundaries of a future parking permit program, but in comparing this site to other ones which are kind of more in commercial areas, it would be very difficult to just draw a boundary around this, which is what City Attorney Mark Safrano said at the meeting the last time. But additionally, our research led us to the recommendation that staff can't support this condition because of the direction given by the attorney general and this location, which is sort of in the middle of this neighborhood. So, again, we don't recommend incorporation of the condition that would exclude those residents. We are supportive of the project, and we brought it forward in part because the project was deemed complete before staff provided direction on the new parking standard. So, that direction was provided in January, and this project was deemed complete last August. So it's been proceeding through the project pipeline for many years, and at the time that it was deemed complete, at that point in time, it met the recommended parking standards in the transit corridor plan. So, in conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council approve the project and adopt the CQ conformity determination for the project at 500 Sylvan Avenue. They would take that action, and they would waive the first reading, introduce an ordinance amending municipal code, and adopt a resolution approving the planned development permit, the architecture view permit, conditional use permit, and authorize the city manager to execute a development impact fee agreement. So that concludes my staff report. I think City Manager Javon Grogan would like to say a few words, and then the applicant is not making a presentation tonight, but is happy to answer any questions that you have for them.
Yeah. Thank you, City Manager.
So, thank you, Darcy, for going through that explanation. I just really briefly want to articulate that staff understands the concerns that the neighborhood and the council has around parking. We certainly understand the large outcry for the city to do its part and work towards implementing measures to alleviate the parking concerns. We are dutifully working on the establishment of guidelines for a residential parking permit program, and have set and are on track to bring that to council in July. And so know that we are working on that and keeping that commitment, as well as the other various strategies that have been talked about and that are included in the city's strategic initiatives for the fiscal year with regard to parking. The project before you and the analysis that our community development director went through wasn't taken lightly. We definitely took staff's concerns, the City Council's concerns to heart at the last public hearing when it was said, "Go back and look into this provision to be added as a condition of approval." We came back, and Darcy outlined the various reasons. But we have been working with the various issues with this property for over two years now, and it is a pipeline project that meets the conditions that are in effect right now. And it, they have worked as a pipeline project with the city on the implementation of development impact fees, and so we have come to an agreement on a community benefit payment, and they were wedged solely in the middle of our implementation of the development impact fees, where all pipeline projects had to be deemed approved by May 1 and have final action on an agreement with the city by August 1. And so, they are proceeding, and that is a part of the agreement that is before you. So again, we totally understand the concerns and don't take our recommendation as not being cognizant of the parking concerns in the area. We very much are. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on this item? No speaker, of course. Is there anybody here who would like to speak? And you're welcome, of course, to speak. Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and respected member of the council. My name is Suresh Gandhi, and I'm the owner developer of this project. I have been longtime property owner and a businessman in the city for over 25 years, and I have paid lot of taxes to the city. Let me remind you that I have improved the property here, I have brought the property, developed properties many times. So the interest of the city is at my heart, and I consider myself fortunate to work with the city. I've been working on this project for different reasons, and one of the main reason that this property has been sitting for almost 10 years vacant, and is like a homeless shelter, is creating a lot of issues, and that's why I took up this challenge as a concerned citizen to develop. Three years ago, I went to the city and talked to them, that can we do something about it? And at that time, they encouraged me, and they said, "Yeah, the new zoning coming up, and if you want to build according to that, we'll cooperate with it." And that's why I bought the land, and I started working the project. So I've been working for three years. One of the main reasons, this proposed plan that meets the TCP guideline and meets the vision that San Francisco voters approved in 2013 for new development of vibrant downtown that relies less on automobiles and promotes travel by public transit, bicycles, and walking. That's really the reason the San Bruno people, San Bruno voters approved the plan, and that's basically the basis about this particular project we are coming. We had started with 14 parking. When city asked us to make some changes, we did, and they reduced one parking, and then we got the commands from the city, and in the view of this, we added another parking. We also providing bike parking, which is really very important. It's very important. Some of the cities are reducing the parking requirement for business, houses everywhere, because for them, housing is more important than parking. If there is no housing, there is no need for parking. I think that's a fundamental question that this city and all the cities are wrestling about. And basically, we have been working, we have spent a lot of time with the city, and we are almost on the ninth inning of this project. It's very hard to come up with an issue that was not even discussed. On top of that, during this project, the city came up with $200,000 impact fee for the housing, and we agreed to that, even though it was not in our budget at that time. So affordable housing, we had to pay $225,000. Last few months, city came out with development fee, and we again agreed for that. So city is benefiting with what? They are getting nine housing unit, they are getting $300,000 fees, on top of all the fees for processing we paid to the city, and we are providing an excellent building that will promote the area and meet all the guidelines. So I think that's very important. You cannot change, and I'm again saying, you cannot change the parking rules at this time because it's not codified. We are doing the project exactly the way it is in the rules, and we are making all the adjustments we are supposed to do. So I think it's unfair at this time to do something that would change the game. And the TCP plan that was at 406 San Mateo Avenue, the plaza, that is a 1.28 unit parking on the project. We are providing 1.56 parking. So we are providing much more parking spaces than they are. On top of that, they have not paid a dime to the city for this, for this, the development we are talking about, development fee and all that. So it's unfair. A nine unit is a very small project. Our location is right across the parking lot. We can certainly accommodate people. If there is no parking available on the building, if guests comes, they can park. All the time, they can park there, parking is there, city has a parking, and if there is a parking problem, city has to figure it out what to do. Don't go to developers. Developers are creating jobs, they are creating buildings for you, they are providing housing for you. So please support them. And let me tell you last thing. I was in the talk with the city to develop another building, but when this parking standard came in, I said, "No more. I cannot do that because it won't pencil out." So basically, we withdrew that plan from the city. So that's what I'm saying. It's going to impact, if you are going really strict about it and don't be flexible about it, I think it's not going to, you know, development will not happen. And as I said, I think we need to think about parking. I understand that we did the best we could, and we are, you know, ready to do anything we can do and help you to solve the problem, you know? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wanted to speak on this topic? This is a public hearing. If we close it, then you'll be precluded from hearing. Seeing none, can I have a motion, second to close public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll see four ayes. One recusal to close the public hearing. Now we'll bring it back to council for questions, comments. Yeah, Marty, please.
I was just gonna ask staff for the chair.
Please.
Did we ever get confirmation on how many parking spots are actually on the street? I know the question came up last time in front of, on Green and Sylvan.
So, there are time restrictions limiting daytime parking on Sylvan. I don't think there's any on Green, but I just focused on Sylvan, and that's under an ordinance.
As best as I can. On Green, today I walked it. But I first, before I even go there, can I just say, it's a really lovely building, and we're not saying that we don't want you to have it, but I'll get you that. So, what I counted on Green, there were 29 parking spaces on both sides of the street, 500 block of Green. And what's interesting about that street is there are apartment buildings that have driveway approaches that take up all of the lot. So the width of that driveway for one property really nearby on the east side of Green, it's five units, five garages. So it takes up, there's no parking on the street because you're blocking the garage, right? So there's a number of those, but nothing as bad as that that I've seen. So, when I walked down the street, I counted 29 spaces, and in the middle of the day, 22 of them were taken. So, three on one side, four on the other side. It was interesting that there's a fire hydrant that has a portion of it painted red, but you can't park in front of a parking, in front of a hydrant regardless, so that's not even a real space. So there's probably 28 spaces, because you could park there, but you'd get a ticket. So that's my answer. That's my research. I'd be happy to walk with anybody on it. But the key thing is, yes, housing is needed, just the impact of just one more development in this part of town is very, really tough on the residents. And I believe the council, over the years, hasn't addressed it. We had a public meeting a year ago where we went over the recommendations from the ad hoc residential parking permit program. And with all due respect, we have a new city manager, so it was going to be very difficult to take on something that big in the amount of time. So, I have patiently waited, and this is a great development, it's a great project. Just the impacts to our community, to the residents that live there, it's going to be very, very tough. I can tell you, I'd lived near the Plaza Apartments, and it's already creeping over the cars. We're seeing new cars in the neighborhood. I'm seeing them, and it just starts pushing those cars further and further away from the homes that people live in. So right now, there's seven spots on Green during lunch. Just a few more cars is just going to push more and more of your neighbors away from their house. And at some point, all I ask for was, I'm okay with the project, with the parking number that you have now. You don't need to do anything onsite. Just agree that your tenants will not be able to park in a residential permit program, and if that was agreed to right now, I would say yes, right here on the spot. So, we're not asking, I'm not asking you to change anything internally on the project. I'm just asking to be neighborly and to understand the impacts that adding a few more cars on the street, and I didn't go on the other street, because what's going to happen? It's going to go to Green, and it's just going to keep on pushing out. And our residents already are hurting for that. It's very, very tough to park in San Bruno in that area. So, I appreciate your patience, I appreciate your enterprise, I understand that San Bruno does have a growth component that is necessary to stabilize our financing for the future. There's no doubt about that. But I'm here, and I believe strongly that we have to be cognizant that the impacts that every development will have on our residents, because it's going to be great for the new people that are moving in, but it's going to hurt the lifestyle that people are used to already, and it's just getting worse. So that's my ask, not asking you to change anything internally, just you could agree, and I'm ready to vote yes on it. Those are my comments.
Hold on, sir, please. Michael, do you have anything for now?
Sure.
We'll get you up to it.
So, I agree that there are portions of the city that are very impacted by parking. It's an issue that we've all acknowledged, and last year, when staff came to the council and was proposing that we modify our general plan to accommodate a lower number of parking spots in the transit corridor, I was the first one to speak up and say that I didn't agree, that we were ready to go in that direction. And the council followed suit, and we've made some adjustments now to accommodate for a smoother transition, that one that'll have a less, that will have less of an impact on the people in that area. But I firmly believe that this project is a pipeline project, and there are agreements that have been made, commitments have been made, and I really don't feel that it's fair for us to change the rules midway. And I believe that this applicant has done a lot to accommodate some of the changing concerns and the concerns that have come up in the process. So, while I agree with you that there is an impact and that we have to do what we can to mitigate, I don't think that we can hold one applicant completely responsible for a problem that has been developing over years. And yeah, we need to address it, but I don't think that it's at all fair for us to make one applicant, especially an applicant, I mean, this is not a huge project. We're going to have much bigger projects coming our way, and I think we're better prepared to handle those now. We've established a new path going forward, and I agree with that path, but I really don't feel that we should be delaying this project. This is a really good project. I've walked the area, I've been through there multiple times during the day, and I agree with you, there are times where it gets a little busy, but I haven't found a time when there is absolutely no parking available, being half a block from El Camino. There are a number of time limited, but available parking spots on El Camino for guests or overflow from this project. So, I mean, I would really suggest that you rethink that position and just look at the benefit and of the concessions that have been made, and also honor the city's commitments that have been made. That's all.
Bring up the applicant.
Yes, thank you. So, I just want to clarify, you know, I'm not in any way saying that staff hasn't done their due diligence, that there hasn't been, and I appreciate your comments from Council Member Salazar, that the applicant has also worked with staff. I think that this project, like any project that comes my way, that I've got a vote, that I have an opportunity to place a vote on, that I need to think long-term. You know, I need to think about what we're saying, that it's okay for this nine-unit apartment to come in and not have enough parking, even though it is meeting the requirements. When you live in the neighborhood, you know what you have. You move into the neighborhood, you know what the existing buildings are, you know much parking's available, and then all of a sudden, a new development comes in, all of a sudden, things change. And so it's really difficult to be up here and to make decisions on behalf of the community to know that every new development that comes in is, again, affecting the neighborhood. But I also understand what your staff is saying, and I appreciate, you know, spending the time, the additional time to review this, to provide what you feel is the best decision for us, and something that doesn't get us into trouble either. You know, this is a sticky road. I do have concerns, you know, this is just one project, and it's only a nine-unit project, but what about the others? So, you know, when we talk about, we've got, you know, the Mills Park coming up, you know, what happens with that development? You know, there has to be a precedent going forward that, you know, should this one pass tonight, that other developments are going to come across something like this, and are we in the same situation where we can't implement something like that? So, is this because this project is in the pipeline that we're saying the staff doesn't recommend it, or is it that other projects coming down that are brand-new, we do have the opportunity to say these products can be excluded?
So the staff recommendation on the parking permit program condition of approval would be the same for other projects, but I want to emphasize, this is the only pipeline project that falls into this category of falling short of the new recommended parking standards. So for the other projects, we were able to capture them and talk to them and let them know the policy direction that you provided in January, and they have made those changes, but those didn't fall into this category of being deemed complete last year. But this is the only project that you will see that does not meet your recommended new parking standards, which were one stall per bedroom. So, for two-bedroom units, two stalls, and then on top of that, the guest parking ratios of .1 stalls per bedroom. And for the larger projects, you know, it's quite a number of guest parking stalls, which are all onsite, not on the street, I want to emphasize. So this is the only one where you will face this.
Yeah. And if I can add to that, I do think it's important to point out, in that ratio of one parking space per bedroom, this project, which is providing 14 parking spaces, it is only one parking space light. And so, it has one studio, two one-bedrooms, and six two-bedrooms. And when you do the math, if it is one parking space for every studio and one bedroom and two parking spaces for every two-bedroom, that would be 15 parking spaces. This project is providing 14. So it is, on those newly adopted standards, it is one shy of what would be required for the residential side.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Another point, and Laura, I understand your concerns, you know, we don't want to set a bad precedent at this point, and I, one thing I was also thinking about is that in the larger developments, I don't anticipate that any of those would be wedged in between residential, like this one is. Mills Park is going to be huge, but it's kind of, it's on El Camino, and it's right on top of residential, but it's at least separate enough where it can be considered, you know, not, where it doesn't look like we're making illegal exemptions, you know, cutting little chunks out of our parking plan areas. So, this is kind of unique because it is wedged in into the residential, and so I don't think we, I don't think this particular approval would put us in a, it wouldn't put us down a bad path, something that we couldn't course correct later.
You wanted to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, Marty, you okay with that? Yeah, please, Mr. Gandhi. So, as when we were here on the 14th, the question that came up was just the question, right? There was a question, and I, there was enough of us that said, "We wanted to pose the question and see what your thoughts were in regards to what staff has talked to you about." And I think that's, again, where Mr. Medina had started with on the 14th, and so we're back to that. So is that what you wanted to address or discuss?
Well, I think Councilman was asking about if we are ready to make some kind of a judgment here that we will not participate in the residential parking program. You heard the staff here, it's probably not legal. I would remind you, it's not legal at this stage, but if we can, as Councilman last time mentioned, that if we can recommend to our tenant, or we can put part of the rules in the tenant, that they would not basically go for, the only question is only one or two people, because everybody will have a parking. So there is no- So there is nobody without the parking. The way we allocate is everybody has minimum one parking and two parking people will have two. So the person who don't, don't have a two, we can put in that list that they would not apply for this residential parking permit. And that way, it will comply with your vision. If that thing comes into law or it becomes, whenever the enforcement comes up, then tenant will have to comply with that because we'll put it there in the lease and we will agree to do that, if that would help.
Thank you, Mr. Gandhi. So I want to turn to staff or the attorney. So a couple of things. One is, the one, there was something brought up about legality at this stage, okay? Two was about entering it into a lease agreement when the units are leased, so.
So I think just for the record, it needs to be clarified that we're really talking about two different questions. The, the first question is whether the city could or should impose a condition of approval that would exclude the property from a future and speculative residential permit parking program. The staff's recommendation for the reasons that both the community development director and city manager indicated, his staff does not recommend that the city impose that condition of approval. The second and separate question is a request that the council made to the applicant, which is whether the applicant would voluntarily agree to such a condition. And that's really a totally different issue and there's certainly no illegality in the council making that request. So I'm not sure I fully understood what the applicant's position was at, at the podium, but the city council can certainly make that request and the applicant can respond in whatever way he deems a fit.
Okay. So, so thank you for the clarification and I think what I heard Mr. Gandhi said, and you correct me, please, sir, is that in the lease going forward, should there be a permit program then, but that's on your end and you would write in the lease to the tenants? Is that what you said? Okay, I just want to make sure I understood correctly. Mr. Zafarano?
Right, so, so I think it's-
Which he'd be volunteering that, it's not correct?
Right, so what, what we understand is that the applicant would agree to place such a condition in the lease and require tenants to sign it. And then the question is, how would that condition be enforced? So that's, that's the issue.
All right, and thank you for coming up. Marty?
That's a great compromise. If we need the legal experts to, to agree to that, and it's pretty much the same thing that you're agreeing to, on your part, to put it in there and it will be part of the conditional agreement, then, then I'll say yes.
Well, I, I think we have to be careful because it's, it's a volunteer aspect, it's not, you can make it a part of the condition.
Let me, let me clarify.
He's trying to be the neighborly person, yes.
Yeah. Through the ma, through the mayor.
Go ahead, Senator.
I do think we should be clear because I would want there to be a clear expectation from the council on what we, we execute and I think the property owner should have a clear expectation. One is a condition of approval, which is written into the condition runs with the property. We have moved away from that and we are now talking about a voluntary action by the property owner to put in his lease and request the, the, the agreement from the, the leasees of the tenants that they not participate in a residential parking program. I think what you heard the city attorney articulate is that, that is a voluntary action and if the council is satisfied with that, we, we, we can proceed along those lines, but we should be clear, it will not be a condition of approval that runs with the property. It is a voluntary action that the property owner is committing to the city council that he would do.
So that would be part of a development agreement then? That term is not appropriate?
There, there is no development agreement for this property.
Okay. So the commitment on your word?
Yep.
All right. All right.
Anything else, Michael? Okay, Laura?
Yeah.
Marty? Okay. So at this time, we've already closed the public hearing and if we're going to move forward, we would need to go ahead and then waive the first reading and have a second. Is there a motion to waive the first reading?
Motion to waive the first reading.
Is there a second? If not, we're going to have to read the whole thing. So is there a second?
Can I have one more question? I'm sorry. I want to make sure this is crystal clear to me. So legally, where, where, let's say the city does get a residential parking permit program and we go out to enforce it and the tenant is going to say, oh, I can't park on the street so I can't apply for a permit. Or maybe the person says, I'm going to go to the city and apply for a permit and they said no. So what position does the council, what, what are we agreeing to on that enforcement side? I just wanted to be crystal clear that based on the agreement you have with the lease, therefore, you're, you're denied the permit.
If it is not a condition of approval, there is likely no enforceable terms that the city would have on the property owner. And so what you would be receiving is a commitment from the property owner that he would include that in the lease and ask for this, ask that all leasees sign it. It will not be a condition of approval.
Right, understand that part.
Or, or run with the property. And so it is a commitment that you have, should, just for all transparency, should someone process a RPP application, we would not have a right to deny that application because that is an agreement that they sign with their landlord and we would not have an action against their landlord. Because it is not a condition of approval.
I'm looking at our attorney for prayer. Hail Mary.
It's, it's hard to know what to say, except that if there were such a provision in the lease, then the tenant applying for a parking permit, in theory, would be in breach of, of the lease contract. And so the property owner could, but would not be obligated to take action against the tenant for a breach of the lease.
Okay. So we're back to see on the reading, we had a motion to waive the first reading, I believe, by Laura Davis. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 4-0. Okay. Next would be the introduction of the ordinance. So moved.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries 401 with Vice Mayor O'Connell recused.
Thank you. And then to adopt a resolution approving the planned development permit. So moved. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries 401 with Vice Mayor O'Connell recused.
Thank you. Do we attach everything and then I, maybe the chief is getting the vice mayor, hopefully?